Warren, join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Director, review this super please.
Father, thank you for this wonderful day you've allowed us to be in. Thank you for allowing us to come together tonight. I ask for your praise and your mercy and your favor and my imitations we pray.
Thank you, Director. And you, Warren? You need a roll call?
Counselor Howard?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz? Mayor Prokhorst-Segala? Mayor Becker?
Here.
Counselor Watson is excused and a quorum is declared.
Modification to the agenda?
Yes, sir, there's two modifications to the agenda. The first one is we will be removing N two from staff reports for kids connection. And the second, we will be adding N seven city clerks report to staff reports.
Motion to approve the amendment to the agenda.
In moving and seconded to approve the modification of the agenda to remove N two kids connection report and add N seven city clerk report. Any discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Mayor Prokhorst-Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to modify the agenda, removing N two and adding N seven to the staff reports.
Approval of consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting from June fifth. Approval of accounts payable. Motion to approve the consent agenda. As presented. Been moved in seconded to approve the consent agenda for minutes of regular meeting from June fifth, twenty twenty five. And approval of accounts payable. Is any discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Mayor Prokhorst-Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we'll go to proclamations, communications, and appointments. G.G. Dennis will read.
Cancel the that worked with the Stampede Committee recognizing Charlie Byrd for being on the Stampede Committee for fifty years. And so at this fee's fiftieth season, we wanted to have the kickoff to stampede and recognize it as Charlie Byrd Day. But if I may read, reservation declared in July the eleventh, twenty twenty five as Charlie Byrd Day. Whereas Charlie Byrd, if he'll bring one, the ninety forty seven, they're in favor of one of those. And whereas Charlie lived in a Boeing community, later grew up lost Cavan Ranch, the family homestead in Muffrey. He was a proud graduate of Monavista High School. And whereas Charlie worked for local ranches and road, road courses, hoping to have career writing bareback quizzes and started his first rodeo in nineteen sixty four. Whereas Charlie joined the army in eighteen sixty seven after six Raffle camps, served two years, including thirteen months in Korea, and earned an even five burning. And whereas in nineteen sixty nine, Charlie married Pat Harden, who has two children, Sean and Laura. Whereas Charlie retired as a special deputy in the United States Forest Service after thirty-two years of service and also worked with the INS, U.S. Deputy Marshal, and DEA. Whereas after retiring, Charlie went to work with the twelve Judicial Postic Attorney's Office, working cold case homicide while maintaining his love for reaching the audience. And whereas Charlie's love for rodeo and Sky High Sandfield, he bought stock certificates in Sky High Swainfield with the money he'd earned from his rodeo earnings, then he joined the board in nineteen sixty five. And whereas Charlie traveled all over the United States, other, you know, CIA sanctioned rodeos gathering ideas and had to provide the best rodeo of things, it was a pain in the side in his three two. And whereas Charlie continued his career more, he achieved a bareback on his Sky High Sandfield in nineteen seventy seventeen seventy seven and nineteen eighty three. And whereas Charlie excuse me, Charlie had a very fulfilling and successful career. The president of rodeo participant, the committee member, the president of the city, with his dedication and commitment to the sport of professional rodeo. And whereas Charlie has made numerous friends, encouraged his Cowboys, and has a deep love for his family in middle and ranching leagues. Now, therefore, he is the, the City Council of Monavista, Colorado, honors Charlie Byrd on his fiftieth anniversary. This, as a board member, was now having stampede and rodeo, celebrating his legacy at the occasion, enthusiasm, and outstanding public service by declaring July the eleventh, twenty twenty five as Charlie Byrd Day. I'm going on this nineteen thirty.
Motion to approve the resolution, point twenty five, where she probably finds July the eleventh, twenty twenty five. That's law.
I take a few bits from our ideas. And I thank, thank you for the that I've got this fifty years and one of the reasons why I told you. You could be all there to help. I'm looking. Thank you. Yeah, anyway, playing up, but I mean, what is there? Thank you, but I can't be sure. Then, then you got. There is a, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I think my life, when I was D.A., I think we had two Charlies in the office. Charlie Callbacher and Charlie Byrd, and they were hand in hand. Oh, very super and looking good, David Charlie.
You have a motion and a second on proof. The past resolution, twenty twenty five, that well, declaring July eleventh, twenty twenty five as Charlie Byrd Day. Is there any discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Without hesitation, the resume.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Mayor Prokhorst-Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty twenty five national as Charlie Byrd Day to the line of.
Thank you, thank you, Charlie. All right, you remove the citizen comments and special presentations. Incidents and comments. The City Council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Limit your comments to three minutes, council will not take action with the same meaning. Margaret, you're the only ones gonna talk, nobody else can talk.
I'm sorry, I was late, I was working in the bar and I. Sound a little like a breath. Hi, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. And I just wanna say thank you to Rob, who I don't see. Uh, for his crew. They are just the nicest bunch of guys. To, you know, while Karen and I are out planting the flowers and the in the city gardens and they come by and chat and that, I mean, they are just hardworking, good people and there's some young people that he got it, which is such a joy to see, you know, young people working, I, I love it. So I just wanna say thank you to Rob and his whole group for what he has done in town and keeping it looking so nice.
Thank you, Margaret. Anybody else? Any other citizen, one of you, DJ, stepping? No, no, no. Well, you want to say something?
I've already said that around it very long. And very privileged to be able to live in the community and raise my passion.
All right, we will move on to scheduled appearances. We don't know our names.
So our speaker is in route and he wants to do something that otherwise I could throw you on, but she was in route. So if you don't mind just jump into the MOU with the Monavista Education.
Go back?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you don't mind taking it out of order.
So you, I don't know. You'd be good, like.
Yeah, you should see, you should see the other ones. I think they're barely getting out of the hospital now.
All right, we'll go on to contracts, contracts, agreements, and links. MOU among this education and use of the city's five hundred and seat free status with grant applications.
It's been over two weeks, I'm basically. Yeah, we hardly, you really won't walk out, that would be all that. Because everybody needs to know their job. Um, so the title is a little wrong. Um, we're not, it's therapy and all of five elements, you don't need to be there. Um, so this agreement will allow us to apply work grants for nonprofits to help. So we're applying for grants that are schools, reverse, be there, yeah, I mean, local revenues, the R.E.I.N., and then this will be us a five hundred and eighty three, which is the wealth of the most, that's what's, you know, I need to meet this. Um, it does allow them to put it into interest-bearing account, make a mention on the interest. Um, however, they administer things that come from a grant will come back to the city, they will be, be a model. Um, so that's already the thing that's not. Brutic. So there's a Jean did a great job of crafting a very simple MOU that takes about two sessions to read, so. Questions?
Make motion to approve the MOU with a lot of this education and the use of their five hundred and seat free status for that application.
Second, yeah. Been moved in second of the three, the MOU for the city of Monavista, where you use schools on this education foundation. I will one seat two, is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yeah.
Mayor Prokhorst-Segala?
Aye.
I'm sorry, sorry.
You're sorry?
Mayor Becker?
I.
Motion carries to approve the MOU of the Monavista Education and use their five hundred and seat seats for that.
Do you want to wait or do you want to go on with the way? Great, let's go with the attorney's contract. You doing that?
I can do it.
Hi, Durbin.
Hi there.
Trying to sneak in?
No.
So the, um, so our attorney is fairish. Our contract runs out at the end of this month. What we are would like for you all to consider is that we extend this until the end of the year. And we and what senior cat that can end his office mate, Seth Walker, have joined the firm. And so the contract is saying that for this next six months, the firm will be led by Mary Lee by Seth. And Jean would still have to be, stay involved with the new support side. And he's asking for an additional one thousand dollars per month. And currently his contract is four thousand, so this would raise it to five thousand dollars a month. And and the rest of the information is consistent with what his current contract reads. And so Seth is has a, has another commitment, he has another municipality that he participates in or represents on the third Thursday of each month, so he didn't be at that one. And so Jean would be here, but he would be at the, I guess maybe both of them would be here at the first, the first meeting of the month. And this gives us time to go through you all to decide if you want me to put out a RFP and they will be then on the same cycle as the judge, municipal judge, and planning on posting that the first of August, so we can get that and the interviews and everything taken care of and with that in place by the first of January.
Make a motion to approve the attorney's contract, best there is any improvement. There. In moving and seconding to approve the attorney contract for legal services for the next six months, Alex, there's a brain discussion?
Question, no question. Uh, you said if we would have put out more key that would also be in August?
Yes. So you guys will have to decide whether we want to keep the contract as is, doesn't give you a lot of time to evaluate Mr. Walker. Um, certainly, you know, the the health and everything that Jean has given us this last year. I'm such a, and I'm, but Jean has anything he'd like to add?
Well, you, you'll probably see a lot of, uh, kind of the same interaction that you've seen in the past. I think what this does is add an attorney to the, uh, legal representation that you have and gives you more flexibility, really. Uh, Seth, uh, we kind of put him as the, uh, front runner here, and I think that communication females, especially will go a little faster there, um, but, um, we, we think that we can improve this social services a lot more doing this, it gives you a chance to give us feedback about how you like it's going for the end of the year and whether you want to continue that, you want to try some different approach or what, whatever you want to do. Um, so, um, and I, I think you'll, you'll see me probably, probably all the same meetings that you saw me at before. But you'll see Seth here also at the first meeting and we can change the, um, report if you want to, to the first meeting as opposed to the third meeting. So I'm still planning to be involved pretty much as I have before, but, uh, you know, it's, it's time to kind of get somebody else to work in with this whole situation too, because nobody lasts forever, so. We're just trying to, to work it where it's a smooth transition for the city, assuming the city wants that. Uh, and, uh, give you a little more, uh, depth, I guess, call it in your representation.
Um, I might not remember right, but it was that part of the deal the first time? No.
Having Mr. Walker as part of it?
Like him kind of being there in some cases.
No, so Seth, although we've asked him from time to time, I don't, I was uncomfortable with ever calling Seth because one, our contract is with Jean and we don't have Seth on any sort of a retainer, so for him to offer any sort of advice or legal opinion was really inappropriate because he should have been billed us for the time that he did do that. So this will kind of wrap up, put the pole back each.
We think we can do this, that, yeah, we, um, you know, I'll be taking a little less, uh, myself to share with him than the words, uh, but, uh, in a sense, you're kind of getting two for one too, you know, absolutely. And so we covered recovered the all that expenses, uh, for, on the output that we get to. I don't know what it is to it's kind of garage state. We hope, uh, we hope this works, uh, better for you and, uh, gives us several months to see how it works. One discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Mayor Prokhorst-Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the con, attorney's contract for the next six months and the firm will be led mostly by Seth Walker into a priest of pay by a thousand dollars.
Um, you can jump back up on the agenda for the wow game presentation.
We can go back to the wow, okay, you're doing the wow.
Wow, sis.
Sorry, I spaced it out, it's been a busy day. Uh, my name is Barbara Sears. Um, the skateboard park is being here approximately fifteen years now. And as you drive into town, you'll see kids up there having a good time. We've never done anything big or keen to be involved with it, so, um, the city and my family has decided to work together, we're doing that first annual wow game on July twenty sixth. Um, you can register online up until July seventeen, Durbin's in charge of all of that for us. Um, I have to say, I went over this afternoon, I auditioned a couple of kids to try to do an exhibition for us. And there were some other kids there on their scooters, and I have to say, they did wow me. And I some strange lady approaching small children, you may get a point about that, but, um, I invited those kids to come join us and I said, you guys gotta do this, but they definitely win something because they were impressive. But I've truly never been up on top and seen everything and just appreciated what we did. So it was good today to do that. We're gonna go to Delores and Alamoosa, see what the other parks have, what the kids are doing. Invite them to come to join our games. Um, we have some great prizes, we have some great sponsors. Uh, sponsor wise, Widowmaker is doing T-shirts and donating them, and we're gonna have some to fill out as prizes. Um, the Lor Foundation has given us a grant to get this off the ground. The city's doing a whole bunch of in-kind service for us. Um, Rotary has given us money to buy concessions, the kids connection will then sell those concessions and we will be funding two projects at once. Um, the city has been very good, even Andrew came over there today, G.G. sent him over. While we were looking at the parking stuff of what they need to do to keep the facility nice. There are some improvements, we, we've let it last, but it's just been for fun. This is our first year, we're gonna keep it simple, we've called it the wow game, so we don't have any infringements. Our first year, I know nothing about skateboards, I know nothing about the next five, so I gotta be honest, I don't have a total, but. So that's where I come in. This first year, whoever wows us the most, they're gonna win. We have, um, we're gonna give cash prizes. We're going to give away helmets, pads, scooters, skateboards, and that's three hundred dollars for the next one. So is our grand prize. Um, I was visiting with Andrew today and with Rob today. We're also gonna buy a whole bunch of ten dollar Dairy Queen cards. And when we see some kids over at the park doing some good cleaning up after themselves, taking care of the facility that we've given them, let's give them a Dairy Queen card and try to get them motivated to maintain this themselves. The city employees should not have to go over there as much as they do and do as much work at that park to keep it clean. So let's get the kids to take care of their own messes. So we're gonna try to incentivize and I'll probably get those to the city employees this week. Um, we want to make a bid. This is our first year of, I'm gonna dream of it. Um, we're having Kenny Michael come with PBS Enterprises, he's gonna offer photos for the kids before they skate. Um, Drew Valdez is offering his, I tell you the name of his DJ service off the top of my head. But he's gonna DJ for us, do music, do the announcing for us. He's also, the ambulance gave us a discount rate, you got an ambulance on standby, which happens to be Drew as well, so that works out really well for us. Um, we're just gonna go for it and see what happens. I think it's good to get kids off of devices. Get the mound getting exercises, but prizes that we're giving them will encourage them to go out and use the park more. And when I look at this long term, uh, Lor Foundation gave us a very good grant to get this going. I'm gonna ask them more next year and hopefully a third year with them. By the fourth year, I would like it to be where they're hiring a real judge, because right now it's gonna be the one who just impresses us the most. We'll win. As a man, I remember thinking about tricks. But we, we hope to get a real judge, we hope to get people all over the United States to come here. Let's make it a reason for people to come to Monavista, we have a art facility, my mom was looking tonight, um, this listed, this one is like top ten in Colorado for a skateboard park. Why aren't we not maximizing that? So. Exactly, wow, the wow games. So I'm just saying, let's, let's help the kids connection, let's help our park. Let's give people a reason to come to Monavista and I just think the Lor Foundation is fantastic and giving us everything they need to make this happen. So it's just what we've got and I just wanted to tell you that, that tonight, even if I forgot. Any questions?
You started off your comment saying, hopefully registered, you don't talk any about us registering.
You're good, well, no, it's sixteen eighteen. Sixteen eighteen, but you can come and even if you just like concessions, we're gonna have to do kids connection. And we want as many people there as possible, because whoever cheers around us is gonna be a winner, so that's the goal and, and, um, our parameters that we gave to the Lor Foundation, so we could say it was successful, was how many kids did we get to register? How many fans do we have in attendance? And, uh, how much should we sell in concessions? Because that will tell us, was this a bit of enter now? And then hopefully for next year, I'd like to increase it by twenty five percent, so. If we're gonna drink, let's go all the way. So I would like this to be the next X Games right here in Monavista, so that's our goal. Anything from anyone?
Such.
And we are signing a liability waiver, sir.
July twenty sixth?
From nine to twelve, wish, depending on how many register and, have you gotten anyone yet?
I haven't checked.
Oh.
Been a busy day, G.G., I gotta hang up, D.D. all afternoon, most of the afternoon, so I haven't checked, too.
Well, like I said, I hit up those two kids at the park, they didn't know anything about it, but they were all excited about it, so I just, I just think, let's do something to prolong. That's all I have, just man in the back.
I just wanted to let you know that on the city website, Tony Hawk's foundation.
Oh, did they? Awesome. We did get thirty-five thousand dollar grant money from Tony Hawk. And when we had the grand opening for it, um, my dad called and hassled them like crazy trying to get Tony Hawk here, which he wouldn't do. But they sent us skateboards that we signed, we had helmets, we had pads, that they all donated to us, so that's great. I, that's cool, we've been following that. Anything else? Well, so, oh, and the cooler is also donated, I don't think, don't put that in the paper. They don't want, know that, but they're making our banners for us and stuff like that as well. And as our interest source donating some stuff to make this happen, so we've got a lot of people donating on it, so if it's not caps, they're giving us what we need, so it's getting a lot of people involved, which is what we're after, man. All right, thank you, guys.
Hey, Barb.
Sorry, I was late.
That's all right.
What?
You've got registry.
And we're gonna have an electric bike?
Yeah.
All right, we will move on to staff proposals, reports, and actions. Recreation.
I'm sneaking in, now, um, we've got four events going on right now and three staff people. What's exciting and I think that you want to know is that the girls softball. We have two teams out there playing right now, it's awesome, we've only had one before and we've had struggles with the girl program. And we've got two teams with fourteen girls each on each team right now, out playing Selida. We've got Selida come down, Beavis coming down, other teams playing in almost a league, so it's very exciting just to have them with players and uh, be able to compete and just popper and have feel for a girls' school, so that's really exciting, kind of boys' baseball game going. That's really exciting, kind of boys' baseball game going on over at the middle stool and that, and then we're, uh, we have pitchers too, and then what Barb said. And that, so, um, lots of things going on in recreation, uh, I was out there working with the referees, that's why I was late, or umpires, that's why I was late. And so, hopefully they're doing a good job while I'm gone and know the rules. I think that's all of recreation. What's going on right now, any questions?
Do you wanna just briefly talk about archery day last week?
Archery day happened last week with Kids Connection, um. Uh, CPW, Carl Parsons Wildlife, the four H group, um, took a bunch of kids out to the archery range here and that and just. And just, uh, did different programs out there, some sports and games and, uh, archery shoots and fishing. One of the kids, we had a training day on Wednesday before, um. Before they went out there and I, and one of the kids asked the other four H guy, uh, who was doing the archery is, what if someone's standing up there and I shoot them? The four H guy, um, comes up to me, the day happened and said, uh, we're not inviting this kid to come out, we. And that and stuff, I was like, yep, he'll be there, but we didn't shoot anybody, promise, so. But it was a good day, cooked some hamburgers, hot dogs, um, for the kids, um, they had a great time, super time, and then it kind of gave the kids connection staff a. Not a big break, but a small break, uh, and they also had a good time out there too, so everybody had fun. Now we're looking with, uh, combined Kids Connection with, uh, Home Lake and some seniors. And I believe within the next two weeks, we're gonna take them out, uh, and use the fishing, the seniors and the seniors for the fun stories, uh. You know about the fishing days, the development, how big a fish they thought. And that, so, um, and we're looking forward to that, and we're also looking forward to doing another archery day, it's just right now, four H and CPW is their busy times of the year. But we are looking to get it, so. More other questions?
Sounds like you're having a lot of fun.
Yes, a lot of running around, and I, and I'm not sweating because it's hot in here, it's actually cool, I'm just outside, it's ninety. Not so, running in one build, but having a good time, and I'm, it's nice, if it is enjoying the program, so it doesn't get a burden, so. You're off. You'll find way too many women friends. About from Gigi Fires thing, I don't know why, it's been too much. Thank you, thank you, I appreciate what you do, man. Sky high.
Evening, council. We'll start you off with some numbers. Um, so in May, we ended the month with thirty events, June, we're on track for thirty-four events. July, we only have seventeen, but I only count Stampede as one. And they're a full week, so they're my one big one, uh, and then for twenty twenty-five, we're at three hundred and eighty events for the year right now. So, that's about average for what we were last year, so we're staying right on track with that. Um, we completed the upgrade for the arena lighting last week. Really? Um, and it looks phenomenal back there, it's so much better, so much brighter, covers a better area, um, we don't have as many dark spots out there. Um, Stampede Committee seems happy with it, um, so we're gonna test it out this weekend, we have a ranch rodeo going on, so we're gonna test it out for the first weekend, but the first actual event. Um, but we had our first dance out there that, um, we put on ourselves, um, we had about a hundred people. And considering that there was the Sunshine Fest or whatever it's called now, um, and about twelve other events going on that night, um, I think a hundred people was a pretty good turnout for us. Um, and we're planning on continuing with that to put on our own events and then bring in some different types of bands, um. Cornhole tournament, we're working with Durban, um, put that on, um. And then we're exploring the idea of a wedding expo, so just bring in some different ideas into town. Um, upcoming events, we are in full blown wedding season, so we have weddings this weekend as well as next weekend, um, before we jump into Stampede. And then we also have the Rocky Mountain Health Foundation banquet this weekend, so you're bored, come on by to Sky High, we have got something going on for everything. Um, and then other than that, we're just in full blown Stampede prep mode, um, so we're getting the whole property and the facility ready, making sure we put our best foot forward.
Yeah.
Questions? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Stephanie. My meeting's on me, finally.
Gerber not, she got up, so I'm just, it's not old, just me. So, uh, since my last report, I got a little bit less done than usual. Um, I took just over a week off for some vacations, some other stuff, a good time, it was fun. Uh, but once we got back, um, the community development department's been moving forward on multiple community development projects, Rob and I have been doing. Um, development plans for Cobblestone Hotels, Auto Zones Development, Mountain West Homes, and Alton Valley Apartments. All of them have turned in their site plan, I mean, they need to worry though, um, trying to do rapid vision of them. Um, it's a little bit more complicated for all of those developments because all that we want to do, the part of the view, um, we're just getting busy enough that. Those, that we can't keep up, so they're going through a little bit longer process, a little more in-depth process. Uh, which should be good for us to go make sure that, that the third party will make sure that everything is current, you know, nothing will get in this. And for these large commercial developments, we wanna make sure that they're done, like, like the hotel and the apartments and those things, we don't want to get this, so. That'd be good, during some of due diligence, um, moving forward to help and validate apartments, uh, we found, we were trying to out vacate a non-existent cul-de-sac. Um, that is plotted to exist south of Legacy. Um, and so when we were going through this whole process, uh, there were a lot of phone calls, hours of conversation, lots of emails. Jean finally came up with, uh, it, and honestly, it was probably an easy answer eventually, um, that it should have been vacated in two thousand and ten. Um, because our municipal code states that if a subdivision is not complete or started within the first eighteen months and completed within three years, it shall be being, uh, abandoned and vacated. So, uh, I've looked up a specific vacation, uh, it's a Jean's review now for G to sign that over to County Sheriff's Office. And that'll just basically clear that parcel out as far as it was platted. And concurrently, our developers turning in here's minor subdivision, so that'll go before finding zoning and then come before you guys. Um, so hopefully we'll get that done in a decent amount of time. Additionally, we're working on reviewing the, uh, nuisance code and rewriting it. Um, working with the PD to make sure that it needs some shortcuts that's currently passed. Then twenty twenty-three, I believe, um, we had to revise our building codes. And when we did that, because of the pressure put on by states, we deleted the dangerous building code, because anytime we change a building code from now on, we have to go to the most current energy codes. Which is something that we do not want. Uh, so, uh, we deleted it and then some of the adverse effects that came out of that is now our drug houses and those things are a little bit harder to work through. So by redoing the nuisance code and adding some of those things in under the nuisance code, we avoid the energy code requirements, um, by making them a nuisance versus a building. Um, so we're doing that now, working with the PD, I think I'll have something for the city manager, um, the relevant city staff directors. Um, and the city attorney in the next week or so, to hopefully get that, um, moving forward, it's still a work in progress. Um. Let's see. We're on baseball fields, um, the replacements for the new ones, um, working with, uh, Darren, Gigi, we've submitted a few grants, um, we have a grant writer that we're. Um, kind of paying as a PR and she's given us a really, really good rate. Uh, so she's writing a few grants for us, um, now we have the education foundations, MOU, we'll submit a few more, um, we have some meetings with GOCO. Uh, and then we're gonna work with the Davis Fund and a few others, um, kind of going after some bigger grants now. So we're gonna do those as well, um. In conjunction with that, I have another memorandum of understanding that you guys will be getting probably the next time I come up, uh, Jean's reviewing that one now. And that one's with the school district itself, and basically what we want is a best close as possible, personality proof, um, memorandum of understanding so that. If school's not in session, we have first right of use, if school's in session, they have first right of use. Um, you know, who's taking care, doing the maintenance and all those kinds of things. Um, so that's, we'll hopefully have that done, um, and in front of you guys here before too long. Uh, so if we get that done, I submitted a grant to Dola for a hundred thousand dollars for a new GIS program. Um, which will have a both a public and private facing, um, portion. So for us, it will allow, if it works to better, uh, track, manage, and plan for their infrastructure. Um, it will allow for less damage when we have to replace or remove water, because there will be a lot of sub foot. Uh, piece of equipment that, if it says the pipes there, we did it right the first time, that's where the pipe is, it's not an eight foot wide swath of that, so you got to locate the pipe. Um, so it'll reduce damage when you have to do repairs, as well as it will track maintenance, um, on certain items such as. A lot of fire hydrants, the, all of our signs, a lot of our signs are outdated as far as the reflectivity. So there have been R F I D attaching for those on the back, that's how, when the signs even get, so it's a huge asset for, for the works. And on the community development side, it will provide information not only for myself, but contractors and developers. They can look for blighted property, they can look for vacant land, they can look for, um, their own piece of land, and it will. When we click on it, our intent is to have a city that shows you the relevant use codes, um, whether it's a commercial, relevant signage codes. Um, setbacks, all of those kinds of things, um, if you get printed, it should give you a single, an obviously a single page, with a single document. That has the relevant information on it for a, a resident or a developer. So it'll make us much more developer friendly as far as similar in building all of these clips, um, which is something we could definitely use. Uh, for conditions and board updates, planning zone did not meet last month, um, they didn't have anything that was pressing or, um, actionable, since I was out of town, we just entered that meeting. Anywhere is met twice, um, they're still working through discussions on the properties that they own, uh, we're currently moving forward with. Um, probably selling all four of the smaller pieces that they own that they should leave home on. Um, we have at least one potential buyer and probably another than the other three. So I think we're getting close to being able to protect all those properties, and they're still working through, uh. A decision on whether or not to move forward attacking and financing every means, um, there's. A lot of education that has to happen both for the board members, uh, for the U R A, and then for. You guys as the city, the county, every tax minimum, we're gonna need to get some education so that they can make a good confident vote on whether they want to use type of financing for the U R A plan. Um, so that's something that we're trying to work through now, and that pretty much sums up what I've done in the last couple of weeks, questions?
Still gonna buy a new GIS program, who's gonna do a field survey?
Um, it's part of the, uh, we'll take our current data and use some of that, and then the rest of it will be done, part will be the training that's provided by the, our contractor. Um, so like when they do the on the job training, that this is how we market, they'll spend about a day with public works, or they'll go and they'll learn how to do it, and that's how we'll start learning. Um, and then some of it will just be the guys, when they crack a manhole, they'll do, they'll do that portion of it. So it will be a long process, kind of building that portion up and making it right, um, but. The first request I got for, hey, how much is this gonna cost me? Came in about half, what did I request you for a grant? So I'm hoping I can add some of field stuff in actually that we can get a lot of that already marketed down there, like I would really like to get the water and sewer lines and manholes all done in the original state. Um, so that we're not trying to piece up to go the others. But yes, and it'll be O J T, some of it will be over time, and some of it will be in contract.
And we're gonna act appeals that they, they haven't been much further.
Right, and that's one of those things where we're hoping we can stay on top of it, um, right now, we use something that's like colored crayons as far as J S K's. Um, and it, it does what we need to most of the time, but we could do so much better. Anything else?
Thanks, I do, DJ, appreciate you coming in. City Attorney.
There, council. Well, yesterday we had municipal court, had thirty-nine cases on the docket. Um. A lot of this was our usual types of things, disorderly conducts and shoplifting and traffic, uh, and that type of thing, but also. The nuisance, uh, issues and drug houses and so forth. And this is the first time I've seen somebody actually sent to jail, they're thinking a long time, or that type of violation in the sense of, uh. Contempt of court for not, uh, cleaning up. Um. A bad situation with some of the places that are being used as drug houses and that kind of thing. Um, and, uh, so she gave this individual ten days and then got to jail. And there is, that triggered another individual who is kind of doing the same thing. I know that this individual has caused people to contact the city manager and, uh, probably some of the council and so forth too. And so this, we had the assurance of this person that he would, uh. Clean up this situation entirely by the end of this week, and that's the deadline that we gave him. Now, whether he's gonna do that because he has enough about, about previous deadlines or not, or whether the fact that he might be going to jail, if he doesn't. Uh, influences him is to be seen yet, but, uh, sort of set the stage for that type of thing. And, uh, we've got a lot of these situations in the community, we, we think the, uh, new code enforcement officer is, uh. On this stuff pretty well, that he's doing a pretty good job, and I can tell him, um, trying to get these individuals, uh. Moving on cleaning up their property. Um. So that, that's gonna be an ongoing effort, uh, it always is in that area. We'll see how that goes. Um. The, uh. We've, uh, I've worked with DJ some on the replying issue of, uh, so in court. In the area of, uh, just south of the legacy there, and, uh, that seems to be, uh, work in progress right now, uh, replying that, as he said, uh. Probably going into a minor subdivision situation with the vacation of the original flat. Um. In the, uh. So we also have, uh, an MOU school district, uh. That is baseball fields he was talking about, I reviewed that, that looks pretty good. Um. We're, uh, still discussing issues with the food trucks. Uh, and, uh, whether we're gonna do something with, uh, the, uh. The mushroom establishment and this type of thing that, uh, we haven't seen any of those yet, but we may. Um, we've done, um, the contract, uh, has been completed with the, uh, emergency medical services with Dr. Hurley. Um. We've got, uh, C M L coming up next week, and Seth and I will both be attending that. Um, sessions on, uh, legislative update, uh, short-term rentals, uh. Municipal courts, all topics that we worked with, so I hope there'll be some good information coming out of that. Um. Other than that, um, unless somebody has some questions. I'd just like to express my appreciation for all the condolences we received from all of you during the past couple of weeks. Um. And it's, uh, very, very helpful and very heartwarming to have those types of expressions made, I think that. The fact that Ellen had on the community expressed the fact that we have a hundred and eighty people attending that service. And she did, um, work, planting flowers, special work in the city in doing that, and setting an example that, um. Really helped our community, I think, so thank you.
I'm free. Thank you, Jean. City Manager Report. She's very, that's decent paper, she's a leader.
Okay, first and after, on our search for a police chief, that closed on last Friday, we have seventeen applicants. So how the process goes now is I'll pick. Eight, maybe ten, and. The recruiting firm will do the initial Zoom, um, interviews with them. I'll then get to watch those and decide, okay, who do, who are we gonna weed this down to? And then there will be a, um, kind of a, a law enforcement that won't include our local law enforcement, meaning in-house. Um, but it'll have our, our partners, someone from maybe the sheriff's office or the DA's office or state patrol or ambulance, who they work more closely with. They'll do a round of interviews with the final candidates. With the final candidates. Um, then we'll be, see with community folks will be able to do an interview, get their pulse. And then there will be a community reception. And then I do the final ones with them. So. If any of you want to be on a community panelist, let me know and I can, I can get that set up. We don't have any dates yet. It kind of throws us off a little bit because of. C M L being next week. So like Gene, I'll be leaving on Tuesday morning and the rest of the week. But I'm, I'm very optimistic on that. We do have some locals. We have some in-house. And we have out of stairs. So they did a good job on. You know, getting the word out and getting me some applications to look at. This last couple of days I was. Up in Grand Junction for my last Dola meeting. Uh, this was the Energy Mineral Grant Advisory Board I've served on for the last eight years. So it's a little bittersweet. It's, it's a sad, but legislature did this last session in stripping all of the money. We had twenty-five million in requests and we had twelve million to give. So we had to really. Wax some of them. So it's kind of sad. This last week. Uh, Colette Skaeth. Before she left, I'm not sure exactly the timing, but. Last November, when we dedicated the Faith Pinkley Veterans Memorial Park. Her local chapter of the Daughters of American Revolution had a plaque. That was dedicated in the park. And so Colette had arranged for. Four or five of her friends from that chapter and the Chamber of Commerce from Buckeye, Arizona. Come up. And it's so, it's really kind of sad because. Colette was so looking forward to being able to share, you know, her community with her friends. And she had an issue where she couldn't come. So these ladies came. Themselves. And we did a little dedication in the park so they could see their plaque. And then Colette told me that she still had some money she would like to donate. So if I wanted to find a statue or something that fit into the pay range of what she was going to give us, that. She would like to do that for an additional enhancement. So been looking, checking things out. And then Saturday, this Saturday is the dedication of the Sanchez Park. And that's at the, in between Clay and Pennsylvania, in the area of community. And we were out there today. Rob's Public Works, there's, was four primary, the. Uh, four primary employees that were assigned to getting it done. You'll have to drive by and look. We got that little pavilion up, has a couple picnic tables. It has, um. This will be our first park that we are, are trying some artificial turf. And then we've got some low water use plants that have been planted. And it looks really nice. So I hope you can come out Monday or Saturday at one o'clock. The ceremony, I'm guessing, won't last more than thirty minutes, but, um. Mr. Sanchez still had five living children. All five are going to be in town for it. That's about it.
Yeah, we'll talk about it like the Alton project.
Valley project will start, start after Steen Pete. Not sure which day, but it'll get going after that. And then we've been. Still working. We had a meeting on the generator project out at Sky High. And looking at. Changing a few of the. Of the thing that it's almost, it's ninety percent done. So we're looking, we're looking forward on it. And then did we tell you about our latest call with the engineer for the wastewater treatment plant? So. You know, they've gone from thirty million to forty-two million and. We told the engineers to go ahead and finish the plans and then let's go ahead and put it out to bid. So we really know the amount that we're, we're looking at being faced with. The Department of Energy grant that we were hoping to be able to apply for, for an additional ten million dollars, that's gone away. So. We're, Rob and I are pulling our hair out over. You know, what are we going to do if it really comes back at forty-two million? There's that. We are moving forward with the tree grant. We will be planting sixty of the five hundred trees this fall. And we haven't really picked those locations yet, but. That'll be really nice. And then. I kind of got my days of all mixed up. Uh, I went out to the C R H D C housing, new housing development that's out at Byter, they'll sell. It was, it was impressive. I got to go through three of the four, four plans. They're all completed. The families are ready to move in. I asked, and these are for low and moderate income. And I said, what is the price point? Of these? What will these houses appraised for? Three hundred and ten thousand, three twenty-five. You know, stuff, wow, that's. Lower income. So these folks are getting some down payment assistance help. And we'll take over their loans and start living, but. It's, they look really nice. You know, the, 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 those were, those. Four homes were done with the sweat, with the sweating, with the. We've got a lot, a lot of moving parts right now.
Sidewalk project?
Sidewalk project. So Rob mentioned that a couple of weeks ago. It's the big project from Alta out to Sky High. That's getting wrapped into the reconfiguration of Sherman Avenue. So that it's turned maybe more into a direct ninety-degree angle. So that one. Is still under the drawings because by going ahead and giving that additional project to the current. Uh, sidewalk engineer, which was C Dot's recommendation, it cut out the time of having to repost it. And by making it a bigger project, they think that it would come back in at a better price. And so. I think we got one point six million for the sidewalk. We've got almost eight hundred thousand for the, for the. One six, for the ninety-degree reconfiguration. And then. And then the construction on the sidewalk. That'll go north on two eighty-five from Dairy Queen up to. O'Reilly's, that will be getting underway shortly at Steen Pete as well. You know, I don't know if you've noticed, there's been a little bit of dirtwork across the street. On the property to the west of San Luis Valley Federal. That guy, DJ just approved those plans, site plans. And so that has motivated it. Get building. So that's exciting. That's for the manufactured housing plant. And then, um. We'll be doing a ribbon cutting. I don't know when or groundbreaking on the hotel that will be coming. So it'll be exciting. We have all this construction going on in town. People driving through thinking, wow, it's been on a lot of this stuff.
Thank you. City Report for Paul.
So this won't take very long. I just wanted to, um, bring to everybody's attention that it's kind of the year. For candidate election. And, um, I do, we do have the three spots open. So I wanted to make sure that I hand out the, um, candidate election calendar. And remind anybody who's interested in running for council or for mayor, we have the mayor's seat and two council member seats open. For election, um, I will be hosting a meeting on Monday, July fourteenth at six P M. To give information for all candidates that are interested in running for council or the mayor.
No. Knew that was coming. Thank you, Gino. Okay, we'll go council committee, city commission, council reports. Well, enough. Nothing I've seen, nothing I've seen. Sorry. Can't turn my hearing in good because I'm not hearing. The council, the council of the reds.
Um, just curious if, uh. Don't have, got a hold of these sort of committees. Or groups that have that sign across the street and, you know. Like the Rotary and all those.
No, being gone this week, I haven't had time to contact those organizations. But with Margot here, I can, I think she's one of the signs. I'll. Pass that in. East, are you a part of Eastern Star?
No.
Okay.
So.
But thank you.
Sign there behind your house.
Yeah, so we've been, uh.
Oh, they, yeah, well, we've been planting flowers there and getting good weeds.
Yeah. So, uh, lately, currently we're quick this. She was the. I don't know, the person that spoke to me from Eastern Star. For like. The last session. I don't know. She's not giving them more, but she still goes there. So I thought we'd hear about that too.
Okay. You want to pass her name on? I know.
Carrie.
Carrie.
And if she can tell you who. Talk to any.
Thank you.
I just wanted to look nice. Anything else?
All right, um. Let's see. Charlie, it's an honor. Oh. Our next meeting, we will not have a meeting on July third. That was to celebrate Independence Day. So that means our next meeting will be July seventeenth. At six P M. The council changes. You have a question?
What do you say, council funds?
City council funds, I would tell, no, I'll have a moment. I'll check and.
Now for one cupcake?
Yes.
But who's working? Oh. Dude, I'll put the bill on that. I'd have the one cupcake. Maybe it'll be half. I have time to get it.
That's right.
You have to be here. Isn't there someone we can hire? Hey, hire me. I'll do it.
You know, uh, same thing goes. Keep an eye on your neighborhood and see what's going on. Please do not be afraid to say something. There's stuff going on in town. There's a non-emergency number, call it. Just get a document. Because there's, if, if we stay persistent with it, they'll go away. We hope. With that, we will adjourn this meeting until July seventeenth, six P M. Here in council chambers.